Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission's regular meeting for August 26, 2024. This time we'll move to roll call. Commissioner Rasmussen.
Yes, Commissioner Bott.
Here.
Commissioner Britton.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Knabel.
Here.
Commissioner Rasmussen, here. Commissioner Stevens? Not here tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. This time we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Unless there's a motion to amend, I'd look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Knabel. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Fisher. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post say no. Motion carries six zero. Item number four tonight is open forum. This is a chance for anyone who's in the audience tonight to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda. So if you're here for one of the agenda items, you'll have a chance later. If you have something you want to address the commission about that's not on the agenda, at this time I'll open open forum. All right, seeing none, I will close open forum. Item five is Chair's explanation of the hearing process. The Planning Commission is a volunteer advisory group to the city council. One of the commission's functions is to hold public hearings and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. The purpose of these public hearings is to provide an opportunity for each applicant and citizens to present information, ask questions, and express opinions. Since these proceedings are televised and recorded for the public record, anyone wishing to speak must step up to the podium and give their name and address before addressing the commission. Staff reports are prepared and provided to the applicant and Planning Commission in advance of the meeting. The first step in the hearing will be for staff to present a summary of the report. The applicant will then have the opportunity to briefly explain the proposal and provide additional information or comments. Anyone wanting to speak in favor or against the proposal will then be heard. Upon completion of the testimony, the hearing will be closed to public comment. The Planning Commission will then discuss and act on the matter. Two complete agenda packets are available for viewing on the back table. Please do not remove those items. The city council will act on the items on tonight's agenda at their meeting on Wednesday, September 4th, 2024, which starts at 7:00 PM. With that, we'll move to item six, public hearings and applications. A is lot split nine zero one six Kimbrough, cases MS two zero two four dash zero one six and V two zero two four dash zero one six with Riley Rooney presenting.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Before you this evening is a proposal for a minor subdivision and lots and variance at ninety sixteen Kimbrough Avenue South. So the lot is located on six point four five acres just east of Cottage Grove Ravine Regional Park and north of one hundred Street South. It is currently zoned R one rural residential and is guided as rural residential in the 2040 comprehensive plan. The parcel currently contains a single residence with two accessory structures and then has two accesses. I know one is a little bit hard to see off of Kimbrough Avenue, so there are two there. I will touch on that on a later slide. So the applicant is proposing to subdivide the six point four five acre parcel into two different lots. He's proposing to retain three point one acres for the existing R one rural residential property. That's highlighted in yellow and identified as parcel B. And also to create a three point five acre parcel to establish a buildable lot for the future construction of a residence. That is highlighted in orange and is identified as parcel A. And then just to note, it's a little hard to see, I think, on our screens, but there are three rectangles on parcel A. The top rectangle is the location of the proposed house for that lot. The bottom two rectangles are existing or proposed sites for the drain fields that would support the construction of a septic system for that parcel. It's also important to note that the applicant is requesting a variance for the city's minimum lot or to the city's minimum lot width. The proposed survey creates a new parcel with a frontage of sixty feet in width, while the minimum width required is a hundred and eighty for the R one rural residential district. Since the septic tank sites on parcel B are located central to the existing lot here, locating the frontage north of the parcel or to the north of the parcel would alleviate any impedance to the existing and established septic systems on that site. In addition, by using the frontage at the north of the lot, the separation of the existing accessory structures here from the home would be alleviated for parcel B. I'd also like to note that the proposal is consistent with other minor subdivision applications along Kimbrough that we've reviewed in the past and that the required development standards that are set for the R one rural residential district would be met with the intent to maintain low-density residential areas. And then, again, I'd just like to touch back on that access note that I had mentioned previously. So the existing parcel does have two accesses here and here. However, no additional access points are permitted off of Kimbrough Avenue. So the property owner has proposed moving the northmost access, which is highlighted in red on the screen, to parcel A, to the newly created parcel, to allow that parcel to have frontage off of Kimbrough Avenue. For the time being, the applicant plans to maintain both accesses and use them as they are intended for right now until a building permit is requested for the new home on parcel A. At that time, the construction of the driveway will occur, which will allow parcel A to have that frontage. So this one will not exist any longer and will come up here to allow the house to have access. With that, the recommendation is before you. Representative of the applicant is here to answer any questions, as am I. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Britton.
This looks familiar. Have we seen this application before?
No, but in the spring, we did see a separate minor subdivision for an almost identical parcel just further south on Kimbrough, but it has a similar layout, so it will look very familiar.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
I have a question. So when construction starts on the new parcel, will there be a required easement for that driveway since it will service both parcels?
Yeah, so, so the right-of-way is already taken along the road, so there shouldn't, they'll have a right-of-way easement that'll happen, but they already have the requested along Kimbrough Avenue.
For parcel B?
Oh, sure.
Like because they're going to still be, they'll have to drive on parcel A to get to parcel B from that particular access, correct?
Nope, so they'll still have their existing access down here. So each of the parcels will have their own.
Right, but will parcel B be able to access their parcel through parcel A still, or will it be completely separated?
Completely, completely separated.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Britton.
The drawing does appear to show a connection point from that barn area to parcel A's driveway. Is that not going to be there?
I don't believe so, but perhaps the applicant, the person on behalf of the applicant can answer more specifically.
Fisher Bott.
So why is that requirement there? Hundred and eighty foot minimum worth requirement for the approach?
It's essentially there to ensure that the lots are buildable for future subdivision once utilities are built in that area. So we just want to make sure that we're keeping with the intent of the district to provide low-density areas. So by having a wider frontage, usually you're just going to have a wider lot in general. Sometimes when there's subdivisions to, you know, to divide the land, we will go shorter if it makes sense within our code. But typically, we do want them larger so that the lot is lower in density in general.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? All right, thank you. This time, if the applicant would like to approach the podium, add anything additional. And sir, please state your name and address as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commercialers. My name is Todd Olin. I'm with Land and Resource Consulting. I'm here on behalf of Al Stewart. Just a couple of additional details. Riley did a really comprehensive job of reviewing all these. To answer the question, if there is a connection there, there will have to be an easement over both the entrance on parcel A and then a portion of parcel B. But she's correct in that if there's no connection, no easements, and they will both have their independent accesses at the end of the day. What we were requesting is that both accesses on the parcel B may be allowed to be maintained until the second, until the driveway is necessary on parcel A, then we'd close the other one. So at the end of the day, it would remain with one access per lot. So one of the items I just wanted to point out, and I don't know if you're making different, if there's two different things on the agenda to discuss, the plan itself and maybe the variance. But on the variance, we are, what we're trying to do is save some character here. There's a couple of outbuildings or farm, farm-type buildings. And they're, I wouldn't say a staple of Cottage Grove, but they're there and they're kind of, they've been there for a long, long time. What we'd like to do is be able to conform to all of the area bulk area standards with the exception of the frontage and be able to save those barns and the existing house and the septic that goes with the existing home. The configuration that you have on parcel one or parcel A, excuse me, is really a rendition that could be, but really is dependent on when a building permit is requested. There will be an architect that would design that to fit into that lot. And we went out and did some soil borings to make sure that those areas do work and do perk. So we're not creating a situation where we're going through all these steps to do a split that doesn't work at the end of the day anyway. So, and then the last thing I wanted to point out was under all, and I mentioned a little bit, but under all other bulk area standards, the intent is followed with the exception of that frontage because we have six point, six acres and change, and your minimum lot standard size is three acres. And then, of course, there's setbacks and everything else that applies, but we can conform to all those things with the exception of that frontage and still follow the intent. So I'm here for questions if you have any.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Rasmussen.
Sounds like you guys did homework with soil borings and all that investigation. I'm just looking at this drawing and there seems to be a lot of grade change. I can't really tell if it's going down or up. I think it's down, but the house fits on that hill and the septic without any concerns. Seems like it's kind of all built on a, on a hill is what it looks like here.
That's correct, Mr. Commissioner. The, the grade falls somewhat gently away from the road, but then once it gets behind that septic, the existing septic and barn, then it kind of flattens out and then does rise towards the west. I picked a point where it tucks into the hill so they'd have a view out over the lower area. But again, the septics would work based on the grades. And of course, when we do septics, they have to remain native soils. Where, what we do is the first step is we go out and we would, in this case, remove some trees, but then fence them so nobody would drive over them and compact them, and they would stay the way they are. So we picked spots where we knew the grades would work. If there's a different configuration, they'll have to go through that again, and I suspect they will when the building permit is applied for.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I couldn't tell, looking at this, if it was sloped down or upwards, but hearing that it goes up makes a little more sense. Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Any further questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open public hearing on the application. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the application can step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right, this.
Well, I just had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Chris Meyer. I'm the next-door neighbor. And I'm quite familiar with the lay of the land because I used to own that also. And it's quite a drainage easement, pretty much where that lot, new lot line is going to be. And where that driveway would be, there would have to be s- some area where that water can come through, 'cause in the spring, when there's a big snowmelt, it's like a river. And I'm just, uh, I'm not too concerned about my property being affected, but I just had a question about how they would take care of that.
Okay, as far as the drainage easement goes, and if they've taken care of that and thought of that?
When I was there, I, I did the split three acres off, and uh, the city came out and they told me if I ever had a problem with those two old outbuildings, I couldn't replace them 'cause of the easement. So that driveway is gonna be in part of the drainage easement. So I'm just wondering how it would be addressed.
All right, thank you. Any further comment? All right, at this time, I will close public hearing, and Riley, I don't know if you wanna handle or handoff to answer the question about drainage easement and what's going on on that side of the property?
I am no engineering expert. Um, however, from my perspective as a planner, um, the driveway meets all setbacks proposed for the district, um, so we don't have any concern, at least for setbacks on our end. As for drainage, I would probably typically defer to a drainage expert. Um, perhaps Todd can answer some questions. Otherwise, we can always ask.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, uh, so drainage, we would certainly um look at with a driveway permit within the right-of-way, right? And we certainly uh wouldn't allow for uh construction of a driveway or any infrastructure that would impact drainage into adjacent property. We'll have to do some looking into the easement that I'm not familiar with, so we'll need to dig into that to be sure that anything that's proposed isn't uh impacting a condition of an easement that exists.
Okay. And I guess my concern is we're just, at this point, we're just, there's no proposal to actually build on this property, so what we're looking for is ju- just making sure that this split that we're making is making to buildable property or to buildable lots. And so I guess the concern at this point is, do we believe that this drainage issue may cause an issue with buildable, buildabildaby? Buildabilaby on the, on the, on the property? Or do we, are we confident that this is not gonna be an issue as, as far as getting to the point where now we're talking about a driveway that can't be there?
Right. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, uh, no, I'm certain there's a way that we would work through if there was a challenge uh as it relates to drainage.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? Commissioner Fisher?
I didn't have a question, but I just wanted to speak on the variance, because, you know, variances are typically granted when there's some sort of hardship that isn't, you know, made by the, by the person who owns the property. And considering where the septic line is, and you had mentioned it specifically, so I, I see what you did with the variance and why you're asking for it, and it, it makes sense to me. Um, my only concern is the, going back to the easements, because, you know, everything's fine and dandy until someone drives on someone else's property and makes somebody angry. So I would just be aware of that as they go through their approval process. If that is going to stay connected, like it looks like it is in the plan, that those agreements are, are clear, 'cause we don't want people fighting.
Oh, yeah. No, from, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, we would want to ensure that those are taken into hand before a building permit is addressed on that parcel.
And I would imagine if someone's gonna build a driveway back there, they would build it so it wouldn't wash out every year. So hopefully, those things can be addressed as they go.
Any further comments, discussion from commission? All right, at this time, I would look for a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve uh both applications, subject to the stipulations in the staff report.
All right, I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Fisher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Asmussen. Uh, any further discussion on the motions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed, say no. Motion carries six-zero. Item seven tonight is a presentation from Zach Doctor, the Parks Director for the city.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight about the Preserve Play Prosper Plan, uh, which is basically an opportunity for our residents to vote on um reinvesting into parks and outdoor spaces in Cottage Grove. Parks and Recreation is a point of pride in Cottage Grove, and we see that in how our facilities are being used and how, how the growth of those facilities is be- are being used. I'm sure you, as commissioners, see it, that every time we build a neighborhood, people are pretty uh excited to get their new neighborhood park and use the facilities, whether it's trails or park facilities or programs or events or whatever it is. But um we're seeing that growth in Cottage Grove with the growth of the community and just with the excitement of the, the investments we've made. But it's getting harder and harder to make those capital investments. So we, we always take a lot of pride that our oldest and smallest parks are just as well-maintained as our um largest and newest parks, um, something we've always taken a lot of pride in. But it's those capital investments that kind of catch up to you, you know, those multimillion-dollar investments that are just hard to keep up with. So um that's really, um, and we haven't had a, we haven't had a capital um park referendum in over forty years. So nineteen seven, nineteen eighty-four was the last time we've had a, a capital, a parks' capital referendum, so. So it's, um, so we've done a lot of studying, oh, I'm sorry, I went fa- I went past the slide. Um, we've been doing a lot of study and trying to figure out what residents want in the, in our, in their park and recreation system. If you go on the website, there's like five or so different surveys. The most recent was the two thousand twenty-two um uh survey, which was called the Preser- or the um Reimagine Recreation Survey. Um, but we kind of compiled all those different surveys and all that different data, and we came up with a list of, of what we thought the community wanted in their parks and recreation system for today and then also into the future. And then we tried to, and then we tried to put those into three um distinct projects. So really, what I want, what I wanna make sure the commissioners know and what the community knows, that this wasn't a knee-jerk reaction. This is five, ten years in the making. These, these studies have go back ten years. Um, so it's, it's taken a lot of work and a lot of listening to the community to try to get to, to a point where we're, we think we're, we're, we're asking the community to vote on something that we think they want. So introducing the Preserve Play Prosper Plan, based on those uh, the feedback, we have three projects at thirty-six million dollars um that we're, we're asking the community to consider. The three projects are at a, a Hamlet Park, upgrade enhancement of Hamlet Park, create a new thirty-three-point-three-acre nature-based park at Mississippi Dunes Park, and then transformation of River Oaks Golf Course and Events Center into a, a year-round recreation destination for all ages. So Hamlet Park is our oldest and largest park in Cottage Grove. The proposed seventeen-million-dollar plan for that project specifically would upgrade the playground equipment, build a new four-season recreational building, install a small splashpad, create a new skateboard park, build an amphitheater, create an art walk-slash-sculpture garden with benches and informational kiosk, add a synthetic turf sports field with lighting um in the existing location of the current soccer-football complex there, and then finish the south ball baseball park complex by constructing those last two baseball fields and the additional parking lot, and then finishing off the roads and trails and landscapes and that go with all of that. The second project is a first-fits-kind um opportunity to, to create recreational access to the Mississippi River in Cottage Grove, and that would be at Mississippi Dunes Park, which I know the commission is very familiar with, um, that we just recently acquired thirty-three-point-three acres through um some grants and different funding mechanisms there. So a thirteen-million-dollar investment would restore and preserve natural habitat, which is probably over eighty percent of the property, is actually preserving and restoring natural habitat along the shoreline and up into the, up into the land. Build up the shoreline along the river, provide recreational river access for canoes, kayaks, small boats, and fishing. It is a shallow area down there. One of the questions I get a lot is, you know, it's, most of the water is only two to three feet deep down there, but there is a channel that goes from Mississippi Dunes out to the main channel. That's about six, seven feet. We have a, it's called a bathometer report, but there is a channel that goes from this parkland out to the main channel, so we can get smaller vessels out there. We won't be getting yachts out there or anything like that, but um certainly fishing boats and pontoons and things like that. Constructing new and enhanced existing walking and hiking trails, lots of walking and hiking opportunities in this plan, create a nature-based playground, provide space for outdoor classrooms, build an interpretive learning center, and then add facilities um for nature activities and picnicking. And actually, the pit, the images on the, on the right there, that's an image of the concept design of the, the building that we actually, we did do a concept design specifically for this park, so that's one of the images there. And then the third project is to transform River Oaks Golf Course and Event Center. One of the things I wanna make sure that, that's noted here is you're not gonna hear a lot about golf. River Oaks is a golf course and event center, but we're trying to find different ways for the community to use it. Uh, we love River Oaks Golf Course, um, people use it in a, in a myriad of ways. We wanna make sure we get more people down there using it in different ways. So, um, other than a Himalayan golf green, which is actually just kind of a fun, different way to, for putt-putt golf, but it's also good for, for competitive golfers, um, so we would add this Himalayan golf green, which you see on the bottom right. But then we'd be installing multi-sport simulators, so you can see in the image on the right, you know, whether that's kicking soccer balls or shooting zombies or hitting a baseball, whatever it is, it can be used for different ways. Adding pickleball court, especially event court, kind of in the bocce ball area. The bocce ball wouldn't go away, that would be a complement to that. Creating a new winter mountain biking course, I think it's a five-mile course through there. That can also be used for running, I'm sorry, five kilometers, which could also be used for running five Ks and cross-country. Uh, upgrading the building, so um kind of with the simulator connecting the two buildings so that we're kind of seamlessly work between both buildings for food and beverage service too. So if we have similar events going on, we can have food and beverage service on both sides. And then enhancing the patio and dining area, which people love the patio area overlooking the Mississippi River. So the plan is designed to invest in parks and recreation and deliver activities and offerings that our residents want, and uh we're trying to find a responsible way to do it with the taxpayer money. To fund the proposed investment, the city's asking the residents to consider half-percent uh local option sales tax as part of the general election on November fifth. And um each project needs to have, each project needs to stand on its own merit. So Hamlet Park, as I said before, is seventeen million dollars. Mississippi Dunes is thirteen million, and River Oaks is six million to get you that thirty-six million. And that's spread out over a twenty-five-year period. So just because if all the projects were to pass, doesn't mean all these projects would get funded and would be done in year one. They would be done over the course of time, depending on how that revenue comes into the city. One thing about the local option sales tax is, uh, it's a half, well, first off, it's a half-percent local sales tax, and it's taxed just like any other product or service in the community. Over thirty-one percent of the contributions would come from outside of Cottage Grove, so non-residents would be contributing over thirty-one percent of the revenue. Uh, and that's, that's data from the University of Minnesota, so that was an in, University of Minnesota study. That was an independent study done by them that basically just uh offers how much of um non-resident-generated revenue there would be. We think that number will grow over time as the community grows, as industry grows in Cottage Grove and everything else, so um hopefully that number would grow. Uh, and then the average tax, uh, the average resident would be at about twenty-three dollars per year um in sales tax. And then just for reference, you know, it's a, it's a half-cent for every dollar spent or fifty cents on a hundred-dollar bill. I think it's important to note that, you know, this isn't a Me Too movement, but it also is important to know that, you know, you probably are spending um your money, your money on other local option sales tax projects across the metro. So this is just a quick map of communities that either have a local option sales tax in place or are considering a local option sales tax in the coming election. So you can see it covers the metro pretty well, so um, just, just, just for reference. And then, um, because the state does require that you have, that each project stands on its own merit, uh, there is three questions, so we do have to, we have to, have to put it on the ballot that way. So Hamlet Park, um, Mississippi Dunes Park, and River Oaks will all have three separate questions. And it's important to know that if the residents vote for just one of those three projects, it's a half-percent sales tax. If they vote for all three, it's still a half-percent sales tax. So let's just say Hamlet Park were to be approved and the other two projects were not to be approved, that revenue would obviously tri- would help us to, would allow us to build the Hamlet Park proj- project faster. But then, once you pay for that project, once you get to that cap of seventeen, seventeen million dollars, that tax is over, it goes away. So it comes off. So if it takes seven years, it takes seven years. If it takes twenty years, it takes twenty years. And then obviously, after twenty-five years, if you don't make it there, it still comes off, so. With that, I will stand for questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Fisher?
So if they're all approved, is there a priority, like what's, what's gonna get funded first, second, and third?
Great question, Commissioner. Uh, yeah, so we actually do have a three-tiered system or three-tiered plan. Um, I don't have that with me unfortunately at the moment, but each park has, has um three different tiers of how we would, the first, um, I think, the first bond would be about sixteen million dollars, and we would fund sixteen million dollars improvements across three diff- you know, the three different projects. And then obviously, if only one or two of the projects went, then we'd have to reprioritize again. But yes, we have a three-tiered system on how those would get implemented, trying to focus on what's gonna have the greatest impact and most immediate impact.
Any further questions? Commissioner Bott?
Yeah, this is just for my reference. How many respondents did you receive for the questionnaires that you sent out or the surveys that you conducted?
For the Reimagine Recreation Survey?
Yes.
So for that particular survey, I wanna say we were at over twenty-five-hundred, but then there was also, you know, we did a study with the, um, we did a project with the middle school that was another seven or eight hundred. So it was kind of a hodgepodge of numbers, but it was, it was over three thousand um responses. And then if you go back to the community survey, I think with the community survey, it was another two thousand responses, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Asmussen?
With uh the, the growth in Cottage Grove, has, has your budget been increasing with, with the tax base uh over the years, and we're just not keeping up for these bigger projects? Or how does that look?
Yeah, so as the community grows and the operating, as the levy, you know, the levy grows to, to allow us to keep maintaining the facilities, but just doesn't allow for, like, the capital investments, as an example. So I've been here for almost twenty-five years. I used to build playgrounds for twenty-five thousand dollars. Now they're a hundred thousand dollars. And those are dollars that just, you know, you still have to pay for fuel, you still have to pay for labor, you still have to pay for equipment, you still have to pay for seed and, you know, fertilizer. So we're able to keep up with those things. It's those big capital investments that are just, we're starting to fall behind on. And the city does a great job. We have a couple of different funding mechanisms for some of those things, but it's these big, it's these big-ticket items that we're struggling to kind of keep maintaining, so. That's my painkiller? Alarm? My apologies. Sorry about that. Soft rock?
Any further questions? Comments? Zach, thank you for being here tonight and telling us about the plan.
And if I may, Chair, one, one thing.
Yeah.
There's, I would, I would like to say, there's no secrets. Every, everything on the website, it's a phenomenal website, there's layers and layers of information. If there's something on there that doesn't look right, doesn't smell right, or you have questions on, call me, email me. I will, I promise you, I will tell you the answer, and um, at the end of the day, it's up to the people to vote and, and what they vote on, and we'll take it from there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight tonight is approval of Planning Commission minutes from July twenty-second, uh, our last meeting. Any additions or corrections? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to approve. Motion to approve? Motion to approve from Commissioner Asmussen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Britton. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed, say no. Motion carries six-zero. Item nine is reports. A is recap of August City Council meetings with Emily Schmitz.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, looking back at August, all the way back to August second, or seventh, actually, um, summer's nearing the end, can you believe that? But um, only two items. Uh, Mississippi Landing, there was a plat correction uh on there, uh, so the developer worked with an adjacent property owner. I'm gonna call it kind of what the historic property line felt like uh for a long time, so that developer kind of worked with them to shift that property line about five or six feet along uh five or six lots that had been planted. So simple uh plat correction at the county, no need to replat, uh, simple process through that. And then uh, just wanted to mention, they did, uh, when I say they, our engineering finance team, Zach with his parks team, uh, uh, initial workshop with the council for the CIP uh for this year. So it's our five-year uh capital improvement plan. Just wanted to give you all a heads up, you'll be seeing that at your October Planning Commission meeting, they'll uh present um their next five-year plan. And then jumping ahead to August twenty-first, only one item on there, but the Preserve at Prairie Dunes, a hundred and sixty-one lots, you saw that a couple of months ago on your agenda. Uh, Pulte Homes is working through that project just south of a hundredth, uh, near that North Point development. Uh, so they worked through the approval at council and will now start working through Um, uh, so they worked through the approval at council and will now start working through their final plat process, uh, not moving anything out there, uh, probably until early spring, if I had to guess. And with that, Mr. Kabat, if you have anything else to add?
Uh, we, as a council, are working our way through the annual budget, which is always a long process. Um, but I just wanted to add with the Preserve Play Prosper. Uh, I had gotten several questions about, um, why, why we're doing it through a local option sales tax. And, uh, the best answer I could give is because, as much as we, as a community, enjoy our parks, they are a non-essential service. So just as we did with the, um, community center that was proposed a couple of years ago, whenever a big capital expenditure like this comes up, that is a little bit difficult to, um, classify as infrastructure or roadwork. Uh, we always wanna try and get the broadest, um, feedback possible in that the best way to do that is by putting it on the ballot. So that's all I have to say about upcoming projects and budgets. Uh, but I'm open for questions, so if anyone's got any questions, please throw them at me.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the council member? All right, thank you very much. B was response to Planning Commission inquiries. We didn't have any from last meeting. C, Planning Commission requests. Any requests tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to item ten, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn from Commissioner Asmussen. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Fisher. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Oppose, say no. Motion carries six-zero. We are adjourned.